Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Please call the roll.
Great.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Karlin.
Here.
Hurzog.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to invite two of our Oshkosh West students to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies, very much for joining us this evening. And thank you very much, and thank you for being our standing tonight, ladies, and we will absolutely do to a certificate. We appreciate very much. We look to have our students help all remember that we're down. And have a great year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
And now I'd like to invite Principal Becky Montar from Oshkosh West High School to the table to share some highlights. Yes, that'd be great.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Well, we're off to a great start so far at West. I actually was just kind of chatting with the girls and asked them like how you guys think it's going so far this year, and they said they feel like the vibe in the building is very positive. They said it just feels really calm and good to be there every day. So I think that really kind of shows where all the staff and students are this year. We've been working a lot as an administrative team on just like getting in front of the kids, so we're doing live video announcements every Monday so that they can kind of get to know us and get to know our personalities. So they hear messages directly from us, and then we're kind of goofy and do little skits and things that they pretend they don't like, but they do. I know they love them. We've also been really working hard like to feature all the different languages that are being spoken in our building right now. So we have our music at passing time. We've been trying to make sure that we're featuring languages in the passing time music too of all the different languages being spoken. So that's been really fun to hear as you're going through the hallways. For our staff, we're working this year on, for our KPIs, all of our staff members are going to do an SLO on reading this year, and they've actually really kind of like dug into the work. There have been a lot of really good conversations about content vocabulary and background knowledge and building that up within their teams. So that's been really neat to see. Homecoming went really, really well. We sold tickets to, including guest passes, over 1,100 students and no incidences. They had a lot of fun. It was a very safe and fun time for everybody, so that was great. And we're just kind of finishing up fall sports right now, and fall music concerts are taking place. So we had choir last week, orchestra last night, band tomorrow. But overall, it's been very good and very positive.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah. Questions? Anyone? Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present, and we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. Approval of agenda. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda? Okay, then we will accept the agenda as presented by acclamation. Board President's Report. I would just like to give a shout out to all of the community members that have attended the community listening sessions and feedback sessions for Phase Two of the Facilities Plan. Your input has been very, very valuable, and it's been able to be used in our FAQs, which I'm sure Mrs. Conrad Peters will be talking about. That information is valuable and it is being used, and I want you to know that. And we have one more listening and feedback session, and that'll be next Tuesday. That will be at Oakwood, starting at 6:30. And I encourage anyone who wants to give some feedback or listen to the plan to attend that session. Retirement recognition. We have one retiree this evening, and it's Mary Beth Connors. She's a program support teacher at Oshkosh West High School, and she's helped district-wide as well. She has been with the district since 1996. Dr. Hurzog, would you like to say a few words about our retiree?
Thank you very much. I've had the pleasure of working with many, many outstanding educators in the Oshkosh Area School District, and I will continue to say and share one of my beliefs, and that is that we have some of the best teachers in the state of Wisconsin in this district. And one of those is Mary Beth Connors. Whatever chosen path we've chosen in life to pursue on a professional basis, we all want to know that we made a positive difference. And Mary Beth is an example of the exemplary teachers who have served the students, the parents, the community so well over the years. And so I want to thank her for her contributions to our student success and wish her all the best in retirement.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'll second what Dr. Hurzog said. Mary Beth Connors, she's done a lot of great things in the community. I've known her on a few different levels, and the community and the district's a better place for a lot of the things she's done, so.
Enjoy your retirement, Mary Beth.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Superintendent's Good News Report.
Yes, so we'll get off to a busy start, continue with our busy start, I should say, with our superintendent good news report for tonight, starting with our fifth graders at Menominee Elementary, who are hard at work making spooky trails. This festive learning includes marking the point that they can find ghosts, jack-o'-lanterns, and other spooky objects on the trail. This is part of their fraction unit, where students divide the trail into thirds, fifths, sixths, and more. I love seeing our students engaged in learning, thanks to these, and thanks to the creativity of our skilled teachers in that process, so. M.L.A. Cook recently hosted their Fall Family Night. Adults were provided with resources to use with their child at home to help develop oral language skills, and families also were invited to participate in fun activities such as painting pumpkins, racing over hay bales, and voting for their favorite staff-decorated pumpkin. So thanks for everybody that came out to make that night a great night at E. Cook. This month, our Riverside students completed a transformative landscaping project at Oshkosh Fire Station Number 18, made possible through the generous grant from the Oshkosh Community Foundation. Through this collaborative effort with the Oshkosh Parks Department and Fire Department, students successfully planted 52 new plants, mutifying the station's green space. This initiative not only enhanced these fire stations' appearance, but also provided students with a valuable hands-on experience and meaningful connections within the community. This partnership between the Riverside Program and the City of Oshkosh exemplifies the power of community collaboration, leaving students with a lasting sense of pride in their contribution for their community. In recognition of Farm to School Month, first graders at Shapiro STEM Academy were visited by special guests from the Apple Blossom Orchard and Market. During this visit, students learned how apples grow, the different properties of apples, and how the apples travel all the way from the orchards to the school. As a special treat, the first graders participated in the Great Apple Crunch with apples provided directly from the Apple Blossom Orchard. So that looks like delicious fun. During National School Lunch Week, we celebrated our amazing school service, food service staff for their hard work throughout the year. These fantastic individuals dedicate themselves to ensuring that all of our students have access to nutritious food to fuel them throughout the school day, not to mention they have the talent of bringing a smile to every child's face. So thank you so much to our food service staff for your hard work and dedication throughout the year. We recently welcomed U.S. Representative Glenn Grothman to Vell Phillips. During his visit, he toured the school and connected with students and staff. Highlights of the visit included observing a unique choir lesson, dropping by a tech and engineering class, and joining a social studies class. As a district, we appreciate opportunities like this to engage with our local leaders. These visits allow us to advocate and celebrate for the great things that are happening in our schools every day. So we appreciate Representative Grothman stopping by. Thank you again for everyone who has joined us at the recent community feedback sessions, as President Wyman had mentioned. Attendees have been able to ask questions, tour Vell Phillips and Menominee, providing valuable insights that'll be used as we shape the future of our facilities. And as was mentioned also earlier, October 29th at 6:30 at Oakwood is our final session. We will also have a taping of the presentation that'll go on Oshkosh Media, and that will likely start later this week, and we'll run that through November 13th. So community members can also check that recording out, and that'll be on their YouTube page for information if you cannot make a session. And finally, just out and about in schools and in the community, so again, thank you for everybody for continuing to be welcoming and making those connections for school. As you can see, it's been a busy couple of weeks. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report for tonight.
Fantastic. And now District Administrator Supplemental Reports. We will begin with the verbal report from the Board Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters. This is from October 9th.
Good evening. On October 9th, there were a total of seven attendees at the listening session. Attendees of the meeting expressed concerns and asked clarifying questions about the role and impact of school resource officers in schools. Specific concerns included the relationship between citations and expulsions, the need for monitoring and accountability for school resource officers, and the impact of SROs on student perceptions of safety. Attendees also inquired about the training and evaluation process for SROs and the district's role in placing SROs in schools. Suggestions were made to review and potentially reanalyze past citations, explore alternative models like a liaison model, and involve the district in helping families address issues related to truancy and other challenges. Additionally, concerns were raised about the transportation in the two-mile walk zone, with a call for more uniformity and clarity in determining the walk zone when we look at busing and transportation. And finally, appreciation for the SOAR projects being displayed in the Menominee Elementary School main entrance was shared. So follow-up has been assigned to Dr. Coleman and Mrs. Conrad Peters for school resource officers. Work is continuing, including the monitoring of discipline data as well as citations. The first review of data will be coming up at the end of this month. Follow-up on bus transportation and the walk zones has been assigned to Mr. Nihans and Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm just glad to hear that there is some follow-up, that the ideas that were shared, concerns that were raised, aren't just lost in the air, but there's actually going to be some follow-up so that we're responding to our constituents. Thank you. Thank you.
And you have the next report as well.
I was gonna say, am I up next as well?
You're up. Awesome. This is the Workers' Compensation Report.
Correct. So this is the Quarterly Mod Rate. The mod rate is used as a KPI in our 2024 strategic plan. Student and safety, student and staff safety is essential, and the mod rate is a numerical form that notes how the district is doing with worker onsite injuries and helps determine areas of improvement with staff safety. And going into that, you can see in your report that we are reporting the number of incidents or claims. When we report this, when we say incidents or claims, not every single incident that is reported is actually concludes in a claim or an injury. In there, they are called actually near misses, and we use that data to help formulate what may be training, actions, changes that need to be made so that we can prevent injuries and/or near misses in the future. One of the things is that staff awareness and staff reporting is key to helping us improve the safety of our learning and our work environments. One question has been asked, is the number is up this year when we look at compared to last year? So currently, right now, or at the time of this report, there was 39 workers' claims or incidents, and at this time last year, it was 27. So why the number up? There's a couple of different reasons. Number one is that once again, we are encouraging reporting, because reporting means that we know what's going on in the buildings, we can track those near misses, and we can offer assistance and support for both staff and for students. The other thing is when we take a look at this, there were some incidents that involved multiple staff members working with a child or a student, and that also contributed to those pieces. When we look at our claims, our extra dollar amounts as compared to last year, those numbers are down, which is actually a good thing. That means that any injuries or things that we are actually filing claims for are minor compared to what they have been in the past. When we look at this, we like to report back out on different employee groups, and we are actually monitoring paraprofessionals that are reporting workman's claims or incidents, because as we know, last year, our paraprofessionals have come forward and have said that we, you know, these are the things that are happening in our classrooms, as well as we have been working with our OPEA, the Oshkosh Professional, Paraprofessional Education Association, on these pieces as well. So when we look at this, we do track if it's a paraprofessional, if it's a teacher, if it's administrator, food service custodial, et cetera, what employee group do they follow? So the employee group was for paraprofessionals, where there was 12 incidents and claims. And so when you compare that, that does come out to approximately about 30% of the incidents. And so the question was asked, well, how many paraprofessionals make up our employee groups? And so we currently have, if you count like individuals, part-time and full-time, we currently have 1,632 individuals that are employed in some way in the Oshkosh Area School District, and our paraprofessionals make up 18% of that. So you could start to take a look at those numbers and ask, you know, why are paraprofessionals being potentially injured or have incidents at a higher rate? Please keep in mind that our paraprofessionals are individuals that are working directly with some of our students with the most significant needs on a daily basis. And we really appreciate them working with us, working through strategies, taking on additional training, et cetera, to make sure that we keep them safe, as well as we're keeping our students and classrooms safe at the same time. One of the things that's often asked are what are you doing in order to, or what are those strategies to improve that culture of safety? And so just recently, we have, with our current data, I have been working with Mrs. Linda Piran, Ms. Linda Piran, to look at the data, to look at the near misses, and we've identified two schools that we are going to be working directly with, with training that is tailored or specific for them based on their near misses. And then also, there has been universal paraprofessional training in conjunction with Dr. Coleman and CISA VII specifically for paraprofessionals with strategies around engagement, behavior management, and supporting students in the classroom. So in addition to that, the review that we do for every single incident is outlined in your staff report as well.
Questions?
I'm glad to see that you're looking specifically at the role of the paras, because they're often the ones who are literally face-to-face, toe-to-toe with children who can be challenging. And the heartfelt concerns that were brought forward to the board, both in the listening session and in public forum, are very concerning, and any assault of a staff member is concerning. But these individuals who, day after day, are truly in the trenches with some of our more serious students is of concern. So I'm glad that there's some proactive actions being taken to alleviate the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Schmidt, Cyber Security Quarterly Update.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm happy to say again that this is a very boring report, which is where we like it to be. So as you see in the document in front of you, just a few things that have been happening over the course of the last couple of months since the last time I spoke to you. We continue to do our phishing training with our teachers. This is the most effective way for us to increase our cybersecurity posture from a technology perspective. Really, it's the people that are the easiest point of entry for anybody, so the more we can put that information in front of them, the more secure our environment will be. We have seen a slight increase in our phishing rate. This is due to a couple of different factors. We had some, there were some errors in our reporting system prior to this, so we were calculating everything manually, which was totally fine. But what we've also come to discover is that there are two different ways for people to report phishing, and if they report it in the system-provided way, in the Google way, that comes into our system as a false positive. So our phishing rate is, if we combine those two factors, is actually lower than what is presented, but I'm putting in the report what's in our system. And then we also upped the difficulty of the emails and the frequency. So now, instead of just sending a campaign once a month with like two or three different emails, we send closer to 500 different templates and do that weekly, and on a rotating basis. So you might get one in a month, but you might not get one the next month. It just kind of depends on how the system allocates those. So between those two factors, we're still at a very low rate. The industry average is 11%, and I think our phishing rate right now is around two, a little over 2%. So we're still doing very well with that and continue to push ourselves and stretch that. The next thing that you should be aware of is that we're in the process of updating our cybersecurity plan. We do this on a very regular basis because things are always changing. If the board is interested in receiving more specifics around that, we can schedule a closed session. It'll want to do any of that publicly because, for obvious reasons. So if there's any desire for that, we can certainly work through that as we're working through our KPIs and getting ready for that. And then just a huge thanks to our network manager, Kurt Anderson, took on the incredible task of updating our firewall, and we have brand-new equipment in there. We have much higher availability than what we had before, you know, it's very, very secure, but lots of like hours and hours and days and days of preparation in putting these things in, and we've had zero disruption in access due to that transition. There have been other disruptions in access that I don't know if you hear about or not, but that is to be expected. But from a firewall perspective, this transition was very smooth, and a lot of that has to do with Kurt and his diligence. And then finally, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, in the NIST, has released a new framework for their security. So sometimes, you know, like you're used to in your workplace, you might have to change your password every 90 days or something like that. Well, the research will tell us that that's actually less secure than having more complicated passwords and changing them less frequently. So that way, people don't write a monopost and note and put them next to their computer. So we're following that same guidance now, and our policies and procedures have been updated accordingly. I welcome any questions that you have.
I had the pleasure of meeting Kurt Anderson when I was the principal at East High School, an alternative high school, and just have found him to be a very dedicated professional who wants to make things work and is another example of one of the many tireless employees we have who are truly dedicated to this district and to student success. So glad to hear that this was part of his recent activity. Thank you.
Great news.
As someone who has to change their password on a regular basis.
I have, so there's a link for you right there.
I will say, it's absolutely necessary, but I understand the pain of going through it.
I appreciate that's not gonna be as hard now. And I mean, as also as a parent, if there have been a lot of disruptions, I haven't heard about it from my kids, so I think that is a victory too.
That's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your efforts. Moving on to other reports, first we have the Education Committee. Dr. Hurzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. This is a lengthy report. I'll try to paraphrase or summarize this, but it was a very robust meeting, and a lot of content was shared. The first agenda item on the October 2nd agenda was that of course additions, solutions, modifications with Mrs. Kiffmeyer. These were brought forward to the Education Committee at this time so that the board can approve and plans can be made moving forward for the changes as students begin to register for the '25, '26 school year. This year, there are four additions. An AP Psychology class, which would increase offerings for Another Pathway for Social Studies, at a cost of about $4,500 for texts for 30 students. A second course addition would be TV and American Society. This would be an elective examining post-World War II at a cost of about $500 to $600 annually for a Netflix subscription. An art class, Clay and Ceramics IV, this would be for students who have an interest in art, because right now, the offerings would end after the sophomore year in ceramics, so this would extend that opportunity, and little to no cost is involved. A fourth addition would be World Language Spanish II for upperclassmen. Again, this would have no budget impact. And then there were seven modifications that were proposed, two in agriculture, three in art, adding the language of arts metal, two, Introduction to Jewelry and Sculpture, Jewelry and Sculpture II, and Jewelry and Sculpture III, which used to be just jewelry and sculpture. There'd be an online classroom for driver's ed that will allow options for students who can't fit the class into their daily schedule, and a family consumer education offering through UW System, which would be a UW Educational Policy Online Course. There was one course denial, which was changing English IV to a mentor-based and project-based course because it was not approved by the NCAA Clearinghouse and could cause issues for students wanting to compete at the next level. A suggestion was made by the committee to include students in upcoming discussions about additional course offerings, and the committee recommended, these recommendations come forward to this board meeting for approval by the entire board. Kim Brown provided us, Dr. Kim Brown provided celebrations from a teacher and students who are using CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts. She also provided information about surveys being done twice a year, looking for any feedback on changes that should be made to the surveys. The grade K1 survey is a paper survey of nine questions. Grades 2, 3 is similar with 10 questions, and grades 4, 5 also has 10 questions. There's also a family survey with 14 questions and a teacher survey with 14 questions, which will be sent to teachers and instructional support teachers in ISTs quarterly. Families will be made aware of and informed about the survey. We're looking for rear relevance and engagement in this new program. The surveys will be sent out in January and May and will be available in multiple formats, including accessibility for families who speak another language. Mrs. Julie Holmes provided us with a refresher for the committee on steps that have been taken to get to this point in the Bridges Third Edition and ADD plus vantage math recovery update. She explained that the Bridges Third Edition provides enhancement in equity, pedagogy, content accuracy, format, and technology. It also, add advantage math recovery allows teachers to differentiate their universal instruction on the spot and helps to identify students who need above or below grade-level support. It also pinpoints exact access points to grade-level standards and provides access to high-quality learning opportunities. All K5 teachers have been trained in AVMR, and this training occurs in the second year of teaching. Principals are doing walkthroughs to understand math teaching and giving reflective feedback to the teachers. The meeting was adjourned at 8:35 a.m., and the next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 6th, at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's move right into Facilities and Finance. Dr. Hurzog.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. So the Facilities and Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 10th, at 7:30 a.m. We covered five agenda items. The first was the addition of two food service assistant managers. With the higher demand on student meals due to the community eligibility program, the additional staff is needed. Part of the reason for this is the increased need of cash management. These positions would also be able to step in when a manager is out of the office, and they would also oversee the hydroponic process at our high schools, where we're growing our own lettuce, and students get a chance to get it from the hydroponic unit right onto the tables in our cafeterias. Next, we discuss solar, possibility of solar panels being added to the roof at Vell Phillips. This is going to result in a request for proposals from vendors. Next, we discuss middle school students competing out of district and costs that would be associated with these activities. Currently, the four Currently, the four Oshkosh Area School District middle schools compete against or among themselves. If the consolidation of middle schools went through and we only had three middle schools, it would be a very difficult opportunity in terms of fielding competition. So more discussions will take place in the future regarding this topic. Next, we discussed preliminary information on community referendum discussions. It was decided to continue to share community member questions and comments on the district website. The committee felt that having the community questions and comments and easily identifiable groupings would make it easier for the community members to access desired information. It was also noted that we would like the opportunity to know that the district is currently in community feedback sessions. These are not community information sessions as no final decisions have been made on what would be the specifics of a referendum coming forward. And the last item we discussed was an update on our health plan in the Three Waves Clinic. Discussions took place regarding a change in the third-party administrator. This would allow for a more customer-friendly service by having a concierge, one phone number, and one website for all benefit questions. And Mr. Nihans also provided an update on the Three Waves Clinic and maintaining that clinic at its current location. The next meeting will be November 14th at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, update on Legislative Committee?
No report. We didn't meet.
Thank you. And Mrs. DeWitt, Policy and Governance Committee?
Thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 7:30 here in the boardroom. We discussed five policies that will be moved to the board for approval at the November 13th board meeting. The first one was brought to us by a couple of school nurses regarding head lice. This policy was updated again at the request of the school nurses and the director of, I'm assuming, Health with the language regarding students returning to the classroom if parents are notified but do not come to pick up their child when head lice has been detected. We discussed Policy 0171.3 in regards to the Board Clerk. This was a policy that was returned from the September meeting to clarify the role and responsibilities of the clerk, which are consistent with the current statutory provisions. We also discussed Policy 0167.3 in regards to public comment at board meetings. Language is now included in this policy that is consistent with practices and specifics the speaker either resides within the Oshkosh Area School District or has a student open enrolled into the Oshkosh Area School District. It was also specified in the policy that the public only announce the city in which they reside at the board meetings. We discussed, excuse me, we discussed purchasing this policy, and that policy number is 6320. This policy is now consistent with changes that were made to Policy 6325, reflecting the change in the threshold amount from purchasing of 150,000 to 250,000. And then we discussed what seemed like 1,000 policies that, so human resources, policy consolidation. So the Policy and Governance Committee approved consolidating all three series of human resource policies at their meeting on August 27th. Consolidating into one series that includes all employee groups will provide less confusion, ease in locating the policy, and reduction in the number of policies in work, especially when it comes to updating three series anytime there is a change to an HR policy. As I said, the committee reviewed about what seemed like 1,000 policies. It was really 100-plus. Some policies will return to an upcoming Policy and Governance meeting for additional substance updates. At this point, the purpose was to complete the consolidation portion of this project before making any changes of substance that might alter the policy meaning or intent. And then the committee did request that the following policies, 1260, in capacity of the superintendent, return to the November meeting, which I believe will be held November 21st. Language has been added to this policy to provide temporary authority when the current superintendent is incapacitated, in which we hope that never happens.
Appreciate that.
And the next meeting of this committee will occur on Thursday, November 21st, at 11 a.m., which is different than the normal meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It did seem like thousands of policies, but we got through them. We have no one speaking this evening per non-agenda or agenda-related public forum, so we will move to the Consent Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the board has been furnished with background material, and each item is discussed at a previous meeting. They'll be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Carolyn DeWitt? Please call the roll.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
S.
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. And now we have our individually considered resolution this evening. This is for the 2024-2025 tax levy. Mr. Nihans, would you like to come up in case there's any questions?
I think we need a motion.
Oh, we sure do.
I will move the motion.
Second.
Herzog and Carolyn?
Yes. Call the roll, please.
What, is there a presentation?
We don't have to vote just yet. That was just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Got it.
Just to give us some discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
So as we get kicked off today, we'll have a presentation as we go through that. So Mr. Nihans will take us through that. So I just want to thank Mr. Nihans and his department and really all of our executive team on putting together this proposed levy, one as a superintendent and also just as a taxpayer in Oshkosh. So the proposal that you'll see tonight is a 5.05% reduction in our levy from last year to this year. And so I think that's important to be able to articulate in our times for our community. And also balances not only that reduction for our taxes, but also balances what we're looking at for stability for our long-term needs from a facility standpoint. So that's always a balance that we want to strike between our short-term needs for tax reduction and that long-term stability for our ability to be able to make sure that we're addressing our facilities' needs that we know we have, that we've been having a lot of discussions about from a community standpoint. So again, just want to thank you for striking what I think is a reasonable balance in that space. And then turn it over to you for the presentation, and then certainly we'll go through any questions that the board has. Drew?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Davis. So what I'd kind of like to go through as we talk about the levy is, we just approved the budget for the fiscal year a month ago. So go through some of the variances and differences between what was just approved in our budget and now what we know is certified from the state. So a couple of the changes I've highlighted here, so the three-year revenue limit enrollment, which is not the same as our third Friday count or our head counts, but the revenue limit enrollment average is actually up 1 FTE. So that's a variance of 64 FTE from where we had budgeted, it's 63 from the prior year. So we had a significant increase this year in summer school enrollment, which worked out to an additional 20 FTE. Now, summer school enrollment for this calculation works a little different. You count up all the minutes from the students, that gets you, or how many minutes they do, and then you get to an FTE. And then the FTE number you get is multiplied by 40%. So on the actual revenue limit, we get 40% of the actual head count value from summer school. So it's not a total head count when you look at 20 FTEs. The vouchers also, the program for the vouchers, while we had increases figured into the budget, it wasn't quite enough. They were about $400,000 more than what we had budgeted for. So that is a direct line. Again, we have no idea until October 15th what this number is going to be. We aren't allowed to see the data on whether it's the enrollment numbers or the actual dollar amounts until the state provides them on the 15th. So those were a little bit higher than what we expected. And then if we go through, so this was a graphic that we went through at the budget hearing to just kind of walk through. So the numbers in red are going to be a variance from what we presented at the budget hearing for the budget document. So you can see the resident FTE, we expected that to be a little bit lower. So again, that's going to have an impact on what our allowable revenue limit is. The recurring exemptions, this is largely the voucher increase that's making up for this dollar amount. We talked about transfer of service within the budget and that that was going to come back approximately $100,000 less than what we had put in. So that did change our revenue limit authority. So then off of that, we also did see a little bit of a boost in our equalization aid from what we had budgeted. So that increased. And again, this is, when you have increases with equalization aid, that decreases what we tax locally. So increases the equalization aid is a good thing for us. It helped buffer some of the changes up above to mitigate some of that increase to what the local tax went up. So then as we go down the breakdown from the local tax, there is a larger Fund 10 and then Fund 38. Again, Fund 38 is a little bit different. It's debt associated, not by referendum. So this was quite a while ago, the district did energy efficiency updates, so that's what this debt is paying off. And that gets given to us by the state because we have to be able to prove the savings from the energy consumption. So there's a little bit of a variance there. So then our school tax levy went up slightly from what we were predicting within the budget. Equalized value went up $34 million more than what we were anticipating. And so the mill rate ultimately is what ends up being what taxpayers are also interested in, and that dropped down to $7.90, or was 2 cents lower than what the budget hearing was expecting.
Do any of those numbers surprise you?
Uh, no, not really. The voucher number is just such an unknown that that's hard to know. I was somewhat surprised it was that high, but also not necessarily. We were fairly close within our budget, I mean, for the size budget we have and the moving variables. Enrollment surprised me a little bit that we went up. Everything we had seen, we thought it would drop just a little, but it didn't, so.
It did surprise.
Not really.
So the voucher issue, it was, it caught, money was taken out of from what we expected, or we received more money than we expected?
So the vouchers, it's a different funding thing. So the way it runs, it's a two-year program, in essence, fiscally. So we need to put the revenue limit on, so it increases our revenue limit this year to fund it. And then we count the enrollment on our aid for the next year, so it increases our aid payment on the following year. So if we completely remove the voucher program over a two-fiscal-year period, the mill rate levels back out. So the first year, because you're not putting it on your revenue limit, you would see a dip. And then the next year, when the aid doesn't get brought back in, you would see a decrease in aid, and that revenue limit would just jump back up. So it's really a wash. It's not anything.
So it's different than we expected?
Yeah, it's a goofy way of how they've constructed it for a payment structure. But if you look at it as a two-year program fiscally, it's really a wash to us, for us specifically. There are some districts that that's not necessarily a wash, but for us, it pretty much is.
Okay, thanks.
So then, on the tax levy, what we are looking at tonight is Fund 10. We saw a decrease. Again, our overall revenue, local revenue limit is the combination of Fund 10 and Fund 38. So Fund 10 went down about 7%. The Fund 39 is recommended to stay flat and level. Fund 80 was going to decrease, 350,000. So we're looking at a total levy decrease of just over 5%. So another thing that want to make sure the board is aware of and the community hears, beginning last year, the state implemented, rather than giving state categorical aid within the formula and kind of burying it from taxpayers, they decided to actually call it out separately instead of putting it into a categorical aid formula. So last year, we received 12.8 million in levy credit. This year, we're looking at 14.7 million. Now, the way the levy credit has been constructed, it really is based on our three-year levy average. So the districts that levy more, get more. It hasn't, it's just boiled down to that way. So a small district that has an $8 million levy is not getting the same kind of levy credit that we get. It's truly based on how much levy you have. So then with the levy credit, if you're looking globally, then the overall net levy is down just over 9.5%. Again, so the levy is going to be the mechanism for the taxpayers. Getting a 5% reduction in overall levy is going to help buffer at least a little bit of the reassessment coming from the city. I wouldn't expect that to, I wouldn't expect that to mean that taxpayers aren't going to get an increase in taxes. They more than likely will with the reassessments. But we've, as a school district, we are doing our portion of trying to help buffer some of that. So the mill rate is going to drop from $9.08 down to $7.90.
Wow. Can you clarify what all will show up on people's tax bills? Is it the 5.05, 14.87, and 9.59, and then those bottom two lines as well?
So they're going to see, and we are going to actually work for December.
Great question, Molly.
One of the things that Dr. Davis and I have talked on is actually bringing in a tax bill and walking through it and doing that in December. So we can kind of show, it looks differently for the, on the tax bills. The school levy credit is actually done as just an upper right-hand corner, just, you saw $332 of levy credit. And then there's a levying amount, which I need to get a little clarification because it, I need to get clarification on where they're coming up with that number because it's not the numbers we show here that they use. So I need to get a little bit more clarity for myself, and then we'll come back in December and actually do a presentation on, here's what it looks like from the school tax perspective.
That sounds great.
Which levy amount are you questioning?
There's, when you look at the school tax amount on the property tax bill for '23-'24, this is not the levy amount that shows up from Oshkosh.
Yeah, they partition it to the city of Oshkosh, the town of Ogumoke. You take that and divvy it up by the overall equalized value.
It's not coming up with that number for what I have either. So I need to get some clarity for myself before I can actually do this, but that's going to be the plan in December.
Sounds great.
So we'll do that and have, we'll provide that as a demonstration at the board meeting and then also do a short video, short, very exciting video for taxpayers to make sure that.
I'm lucky to answer.
Yeah. Not sure how well we're working on it.
We look forward to that.
But to be able to articulate the transition from, you know, what our levy is to how it directly impacts every property owner is really important for us. So we want to make sure that we have that going into the new year.
Discussion. Dr. Herzog? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for all of your hard work on this. I know there's an inordinate amount of work that goes into this, probably even greater than I really understand. So I appreciate you and your team in getting us to this point since we have to pass a budget and a levy by the end of the month. I also was reflecting today on this in the context of the Board's self-evaluation that we do through school perceptions. And one of the things that we evaluate ourselves on is being good stewards of the funding that is provided us. And so I believe this does reflect our being good stewards through the work that you and Dr. Davis and others have contributed by paying down our debt so that our state aid is increased and also to be able to lower the mill rate by $1.18. That's, to me, very significant. So I want to thank you for your work on this, and I feel if I were filling out that self-evaluation on the Board right now, I could give us a high rating on making sure that we're doing good work and being good stewards of the funding that is provided to us to educate our children. Thank you.
Dr. Hess?
I think one point of clarification I always struggle with. There is an assessed value and there is an equalized value. When we get taxes, when we get our bill, the tax rate is based off of the assessed value. We have to calculate equalized value so we understand how to partition it to the different municipalities that are within our overall district. So unfortunately, it gets confusing when you start talking about mill rates. The equalized value mill rate, the one that we're seeing here, is largely meaningless to the taxpayer in terms of kind of what Drew was saying. Just because you see that go down doesn't mean they're going to actually see a tax break. So that, I do struggle with that. I again believe that when it comes to things that the taxpayer can vote on, I would prefer that the voting public makes those decisions. And I understand that this Board has taken the standpoint of prepaying debt. I understand what the possible positives are of that, but I feel like it is the voting public's decision to choose whether they want to continue to pay this sort of amount at the, I'm specifically talking about the Fund 39, the 21.5 million. I believe that we could reduce that by upwards of, I believe what you had presented was 18 million. Could potentially be, I think you had said 3.5 million was the minimum payment that we could potentially make this year. So I think that should be a decision of the taxpayer, not this particular Board. So for that reason, I will vote no on the levy here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It just seems to me that it's a rare occasion, I think, that someone in this position in this day and age can be voting to decrease the tax levy and still be maintaining the services and doing a good job of paying down our debt and also looking to the future of supporting the needs of our kids. And I feel very lucky to be able to do that. I understand that we are in some interesting times in our society right now and in our community, but I will proudly support any time that we can maintain our services and meet the needs of our kids and also have the fiscal responsibility that we can report back to our taxpayers. So it's pretty impressive right now, I think.
I want to thank you. I especially want to thank you for the color coding. I'm a visual person and those boxes really helped me out. I think it's absolutely fantastic that we were able to come to this number, a decrease in the tax levy, however the equalized value turns out, we were able to decrease the tax levy. I like that we are prepaying because that prepayment helps us with the state aid. And without the state aid, we'd be talking about a different number and it probably wouldn't be a negative number for the tax levy. I also think that it's very insightful and strategic that we are prepaying the debt because it sets us up for a better fiscal situation for generations to come. I can't just worry about our generation. I need to worry about future generations, my children's generations, and grandchildren's generations as it relates to the Oshkosh Public, Oshkosh area school district. So I thank you for that, for having the foresight and the business knowledge to put us in this situation. Anyone else?
I'm thankful for this proposal. Last year, I was someone who kind of contested the original levy amount increase because I thought that we needed to be a little more thoughtful for the taxpayers. And we ended up reducing that last year. And this year, this is a levy that is not only responsible, but it's not kicking the can down the road. We could not, we, as a Board, could choose to not prepay debt. We could choose to take that route. We could choose to let our facilities, just, those issues just get kicked down the road for another 50, 60 years, right? But we're taking a balanced, thoughtful approach. And I don't think that there's very many other districts that are going to be able to say that, you know, they've done this this year, reduced the levy by 5.05%, paid off $12 million in debt, and potentially are going to be able to go and put forth a package to greatly improve the facilities and learning environments without a tax, potentially without a tax levy increase. That's just very responsible budgeting. So yeah, we could have done, we could do other things, for sure. But the thing that we are doing and the levy that we are setting, to me, is the right thing. And I've received feedback from this just recently, in the last few days, from other elected officials here, and they're very happy and pleased that we were able to put this kind of proposal together because they've called it responsible forward-thinking. And I think that, that to put it in context, it's a good, it's a good thing. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Call the roll.
Carolyn?
Aye.
DeWitt?
No.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
No.
Smithley?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nihans. Request for future agenda items. Any announcements? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you. I have one. Wisconsin Association of School Boards is holding a series of fall advocacy workshops. There are several of them that will be held in CISA districts, unfortunately not CISA 6, but there is an online version that will be held on November 19th. The purpose is to allow participants to become more effective advocates for our students in our schools, address the gap in state funding versus the rising costs of goods and services, and effectively communicate with our lawmakers and community members. This is especially aimed at people on our Legislative Committee, but all Board members are certainly invited to attend. It's very simple to register. You just let Sherry know and she will get you registered for the online version on November 19th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now be moving to Executive Session where we'll be considering the disciplinary data of specific persons, review expulsion recommendation from an expulsion hearing officer for three individual high school students who engage in conduct while at school or whilst under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others.
So moved. Second. Carolyn, DeWitt?
Yes.
Yes.
Wright?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Hess?
Aye.
Smithley?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Meeting has adjourned to Executive Session.
Thank you.
Make sure I don't take this stuff.